Hall 131 East Church Street, Lewisburg, Tennessee 37091. Number A, review and discuss of the city manager's job description for advertising.
Okay, I'd like, Mr. Marsh, you're here, are you not?
Yeah.
I am, sir.
If you would give us an overview of what you would like to relate to us before we get down to specifics from each council person.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your time, council members. What I've done here is I've condensed your in-depth job description into something that was more in line with what would be advertised for the position. It hit on all the key points of the job description for the city manager, but it's something that the individuals that are out there, the applicants that are out there, would be able to take a quick glance at and see if they're a fit for the position. If they do want to move forward in the process, we would obviously get them the detailed, official job descriptions sent to them prior to any sort of interview or moving forward in the process. So I believe that's in all your packets, what I've done with that job description. Again, I just made it more of a bullet point summary of the in-depth description. The one thing that is lacking here, and I didn't know if this city had a salary schedule for this position or not, but that should be something that's discussed probably at this meeting prior to an approval, if you want to proceed with MTS moving forward with the assessment center for the position.
Yes, we need to discuss that during this period.
Okay.
Anything else?
You know, I'm here to answer any questions you have, either about the description itself, obviously by policy you've created the job description, and then, which is in line with your charter, and then following that is the proposal for service that MTS has submitted. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have about any of that information.
Well, that's what we're going to do next, so if you want to remain at the podium, if it's not too much trouble.
Yeah, no problem.
We will start that process by going around the rooms. Ronald, do you have questions?
I don't at this time.
He has none, he said at this time.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Shannon?
I have none either.
Vicky?
Are we just talking about the job description right now?
We should probably just go through the job description and then address the next steps.
I've got a couple of things. One, under qualifications, should we list some kind of education requirements? That was not listed there.
Vicky, you're the only one that we're going to advertise, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I had that same note on mine, Vicky, because it didn't have, it didn't list, we had asked for a bachelor's degree in the full job description.
Right.
But there wasn't any listed on this, so I think you'd like to have a little.
Yeah, we could, we could add, that's no problem at all.
Okay, and then, of course, the salary range, and I didn't bring that with me, what we have. Anybody have that salary range scheduled with them?
I mean, just off the top of my head, I'd say eighty-five to one-ten. It was eighty-five.
Well, I'm talking about the study we had that showed that classification for that job lines. I don't have that with me.
I don't have that with me either, but I think it would be appropriate to put the range.
Yes.
Why don't we just put that, that'll be a note, we'll get back to him on that.
That'd be fine.
We'll come back to that question in a moment.
And then, I have, yeah, I have another one, and I know this is, I don't want to assume anything, but I think there needs to be a bullet point on community engagement. I don't want anybody to assume this is an eight-to-five job, and we have lots of community activities going on where the city manager is important that they are seen at these events, and so I don't know if you want to put that under other duties, but I thought community engagement was an important one for us.
Yeah, if that's the wish of the councils as a whole, I'd be happy to do that.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, also backing up to salary, I couldn't see a better place to put it, but I thought as part of listing that pay range, it might be beneficial to have a one-line statement listing the key benefits, the Tennessee State Retirement Program, you know, just key benefits that are available.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good.
For that position.
Well, we have a very, we have an excellent health program.
But I think we just have just a one line of the proper acronyms to.
Yeah, that's no problem.
State of retirement, 401K, and benefits, whatever.
No, would 401K be involved with this, as we're on the Tennessee return system?
It would be.
We offer it.
That is an option, we've approved.
Okay.
Another option is we pay our employees, only employees, at a hundred percent on the insurance premium.
Okay.
That's covered, so that's a big benefit.
Yeah, and what I can do is I can get to, with you, prior to writing all that out, the key, the key point to the benefits.
Okay. Vicky, any more?
I'm through with the job description, sir.
Okay.
You can move on.
No, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Can I?
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes, sir. The front page, next to last paragraph, second bullet points on personnel management says, supervise the work of all employees and coordinate with the city attorney. Now, what the city attorney got to do was supervise the employees?
Well, it just addresses the key points of the personnel management, that the coordination with the attorney would be an important component of this job.
Okay. Second page, top, monitor compliance of utility franchises agreements and report violations to the city attorney. I'd like to see it added, also report it to the mayor and city council. How y'all feel about that?
I think that'd be appropriate.
Yeah, I just, goes underneath the communication issue, submitting the monthly reports, maintaining open communication.
Well, I can say that Sebastian has been saying, haven't been any utility franchise agreements that he's reported to me, or not that have been reported to me, and that's just a specific charter duty, is why that paragraph is in there, is.
Yeah.
Understand.
Yeah, but I mean, we won't know about it, so.
Would that not follow the communication, reporting and communication?
I don't, I mean, I don't care where it's put, as long as we're informed, and then if you want to get down to communications, submit written monthly reports on department activities and conditions, not just verbal at council meetings. Reporting communications, submit written monthly reports.
I agree with that.
For all the department heads, is that what you're referring to? Are you talking about LES and the gas department?
No, this is city manager, what we're talking about.
Understand, but you want to report on department heads, not on the water department, LES, and the gas department, is that correct?
Well, I think all the departments submit financial statements already. I'm just talking, I'm talking about general government.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I got for there.
For now. Ms. Thomas?
Are you done, Tom? Oh, okay. I would like to second that, under reporting and communication, to submit the written monthly reports. Also, the second bullet, excuse me, maintain open communication with the city council and provide updates on city affairs in a timely fashion.
Where are you at on that?
That would be the second bullet, under reporting and communication.
Okay, okay. So read it again, please.
Okay, yeah, I would like it to read, maintain open communication with the city council and provide updates on city affairs in a timely fashion.
Okay.
And then, under qualifications, of course, we already had a blurb about education.
Yeah.
Do you all think education needs to be separate, or can it go under qualifications? What are y'all's preferences on that?
I'm fine with qualifications.
Okay, all right, fine with me. Number three, third bullet, under qualifications, must be bonded in an amount with surety approved with the city council. Is that going to be a separate bond for the city manager, or is it for the city manager and the council?
That would depend on your insurance policy. Some have blanket.
What do we have now? Who knows? Is it only on the city manager? Mayor, do you know?
Well.
I don't know.
We have no.
It's bonded, it's bonded right now as a group, not individual, right?
Yes, it covers, I'd have to verify specifics, but I know it's not just city manager, I believe it's like the officials, managers, but I can verify that if I do.
So I guess you're saying, do you want it to be an individual bond, or group and everybody else?
I don't think.
That would depend on your insurance company. Some insurance companies won't do an individual bond, so you would need to check with them on that.
I just didn't know what we had. Who wants to take that item? Gina?
I can call. P P.
I appreciate.
I could actually check on that, too.
You want to?
I can, I can get with Gina, verify that with our current policy.
Okay, that'd be great.
Well, and it's not, I mean, they're required to be bonded by the charter, I think, under the qualification, it really must be that they're able to be bonded, you know, if there's something in their past, whether it's a felony fiduciary duty, something that they, that keep them from getting a bond, that's, that's the qualification we're looking for, not whatever our, you know, the charter or insurance requires.
Hopefully, we'd know about that as well, that, because it might keep them from getting the job.
So this should be rewarded, instead of saying must be bonded, but able to be bonded?
Yes, I think that's better.
Okay, further questions?
That's all I have.
Any further questions? I have one for him.
Yes.
The salary, we're talking about, and maybe you have knowledge of this, maybe not, but what is, in your experience of cities of our size, what the compensation level is? Is it a hundred and fifty thousand, or a hundred and twenty thousand, or a hundred thousand, or?
I would say within this region, south-central Tennessee, what I've seen is, for your size community, between ninety and a hundred and twenty.
Okay. I think currently it's a hundred and nine, is that correct, Alan?
I believe that's, what the current, the most recent incumbent was paid at about a hundred and nine.
So.
That would be in the ballpark with what I've seen.
So what, tell me that range again, from a hundred to a hundred and twenty?
I said ninety, ninety to a hundred and twenty, based on experience and whatever else you were looking, education, experience, et cetera.
I would, I'd recommend a hundred to a hundred and twenty, but it's no big deal one way or the other, but we need to decide that.
Well, I'm going with a ninety to a hundred and twenty.
I am, too.
Yeah, I'm going ninety to a hundred and twenty.
If that's the going rate.
Okay, further questions?
Yes, did they have anywhere, anything about a background check, drug, physical for drugs?
Yeah, that, that would be added, once we got to the process of the interviews, we would note that any offer would be contingent upon background check and any sort of testing that the city did.
It's required for drug testing and any appointed official, we've always done a background check.
Yeah. And to the, excuse me, I'm sorry about that, to the level of background check you want to do, that would be up to, you know, your decision, whether you just did a regular state driver's license background check, or if you hired somebody to do an in-depth background check.
Our police department's capable of doing that, right?
Yeah.
That's even armory, does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You mentioned to me this earlier, but I'll ask it again. In your experience, how many applicants would you guess we might receive for this position?
Yeah, what I've seen, and we, we just did a search in Clifton, but we've also done searches in the east and west portions of Tennessee. Brentwood's sort of a different beast, that was more of a nationwide search they did there, but we're seeing anywhere between like eight and fifteen qualified applicants. Several, as you can imagine, several applicants won't even meet the qualifications.
So there would be a good number to choose from, you predict?
I, I believe it, you know, given that salary range, I believe it would be a desirable position.
Okay, well, good. So all we have to do with you in the next, in the special call council meeting, is to approve your contract proposal with MTS?
That's correct. The job description is just informational purposes, and I'll, I'll make those changes you recommended, but during the special call meeting, you will need to approve MTS moving forward with the search and the assessment center.
Okay.
Can I add just one comment? This is just me on a personal note, just from my own knowledge, when resumes start coming in, I don't know exactly what your process is, whether you just forward us resumes that you think are good candidates, I would just be curious, I'd like to see them all.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll provide all of the applications that are submitted, but then I'll also give you a list of recommended candidates to interview. The mayor did mention about the special call meeting coming up after this meeting. I will not be able to stick around for that, so all the questions of me should be asked prior to that, if that works with you. Otherwise, we, I can always answer questions later on, but anything you'd need to make the decision on moving forward would be important to ask me now.
We have a requirement that the city manager live within a five-mile radius, not necessarily in the sight of the city limits, but within a five-mile radius of the city. Where would something like that be put, would that be?
That would be added in the in-detailed job description that follows the general announcement, unless you want it added in the summary job description, I could put that in there. Now, is that five-mile radius from city hall?
From the city limits.
From the city limits.
I don't know the answer to that.
And underneath qualifications, you said it's not required at the time.
I took that straight from your job description.
Okay, so residency in the city, county, or state is not required, is what this qualification says?
The charter states.
That's, you don't have to, the way I understand it, you don't have to be there when you're hired, but you have to.
Within ninety days.
Okay.
Per the charter.
Mm-hmm.
Now, one city manager lived in Farmington, and that's more than five miles away. So how did, how was that happening? Anybody know?
I don't know who you're talking about.
Six miles.
I don't know, Randall, I didn't know.
Six or seven miles.
I don't know either, but it does say that there's some verbiage in there about, they have to live within five miles of the city limit, within ninety days, unless other stipulations are made. So that's saying that there could be a stipulation if you chose to make it.
Well, yeah, if you're trying to sell a house or something.
Right.
That would have been, that would have been one or two miles outside, and they're going to stop us from hiring somebody if they live seven miles, six or seven miles.
But I think it does come back to force, that's part of negotiations, I mean, depending on where they live, or, I mean, if they live in another county, I don't, I don't think, you know, I think they did at least live in the county closest.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that five-mile requirement's in your charter, I believe it's just in the job description, so you can.
It's in the charter, I believe.
Well, I'm looking at the charter under city manager, and I don't see it.
Okay, hang on, I got it. Okay, in, from the charter, section one, the city manager shall reside within five miles of the city limits of the city of Lewisburg within ninety days of his appointment to set office, otherwise he shall not be eligible to hold said office.
And there's no qualifier in that?
What, what page are you on, I'm sorry?
Oh, I just did a cut and paste of verbiage from the charter.
It might not be in your package, but Mr. Hutto is going to look that up, too.
But it's from, it's from section one, Mr. Hutto.
But it doesn't provide for an exception, according to the chart?
That didn't, no.
No exception at all.
Wish I'd have known that a few years ago. Mr. Hutto, do you have any questions?
I've got another one, on the educational qualification, is that going to be in stone to have a bachelor's degree?
I think it says or equivalent, let's see, where does it say that?
That's it, that's from the job description, that's not in the charter.
No, I'm talking about the long, long job description.
The formal. Yeah.
Let's see, what does it say?
It's under education, a bachelor's degree from accredited college or university in public administration, business administration, or field closely related to municipal management, or a combination of education and or experience, master's degree in related field is preferred. So it says basically that, you know, we could look at their experience in lieu of the degree if we chose to.
Okay.
Now, I'm on the long application.
Yeah, that's where it is, it's right along.
Yeah, yeah, that's where I am. I'm just wondering, it's got a master's degree in related field is preferred, and I don't mind that at all, but will that cut some people down, too, or scare them off?
Well, they won't see this one until.
Until they.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think if we put in education requirement, then we're going to have to.
Needs to be in there.
We'll be, we'll make it more detailed, and yes, that will shrink the pool a little bit, because there aren't as many individuals with masters as just general bachelor's degrees in either public or business administration.
Right, right.
But it's not a requirement.
No, it says preferred.
It's preferred, so that shouldn't scare any.
And I can, I can add that to the job description.
I doubt.
I don't know that I would do it to the advertised one.
No.
Okay.
No, that's not what, he's just talking, he's just answering Mr. Robertson's question about the education.
Gotcha, okay.
And I've got another one, up under the long qualification, so it says minimum of eight years of professional experience. Do we want to keep that at eight, or reduce it to five, six, four? I don't have a number in mind, but do you recommend keeping that at eight, or lowering the years' experience just a little bit?
Eight does seem a little bit high for this size community, but it's not out of, it's not out of the ordinary, I should say, it just seems a little bit high. Generally, it's like three to five years' experience we're looking at. Eight years would be more for like a community over twenty-five thousand.
Can we agree on five years?
I can go for five, as long as they've got good experience.
Anybody else?
I could go to four to five, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not hung up on.
No, I'm not either, you know, you could lose a really great candidate at three years, you know.
So what's the consensus?
Three to five?
Three to five.
Three to five?
Three or more.
Oh, yeah, three, yeah.
Because I don't know why you'd want to limit it to five, I'd just say three or more, or at least three.
Well, if this wasn't limited, you just said a minimum.
Yeah.
And that would need to be amended in your official job description also, but I could put that in the job advertisement.
I don't know, three seems not to be that much, I don't know, I'd say four or five, but I'm not, I don't know.
Well, again, I don't know that you need to put it in the one that's being advertised.
No, no, I'm talking about the long.
Because we're talking about our, the long version of our.
I'm just talking about the long.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that would have to be done at a different time. I don't believe amendments to that are on the agenda.
No.
No.
So what are, what is the consensus? Three or more, or four to five? What's?
I'd like to do five.
Ronald?
I think three to five.
Shannon?
Three to five, too.
Vicky?
I like three to five.
Yeah, I'd go with three to five.
Yeah, doesn't mean we're going higher, but you don't want to lose that pool because of a year.
So three or more.
Shouldn't that be?
Three or more.
Okay.
All right, doesn't matter.
Shouldn't that be in the?
I'd do three to five, that three just sounds too little, three, do we do three to five?
Yeah.
Well, just say, or two, five, that's.
Yeah.
I don't know if that should be done.
Shouldn't that be in the?
It does say minimum, too, so minimum of three to five, so somebody could apply with ten years.
Yeah, yeah, it says minimum.
So what, we're agreeing on three to five?
Barbara, look, I mean, not Barbara, Linda, I'm sorry, look at that last bullet under other.
The last bullet?
Oh, on the big one, I'm sorry, on ours.
There's only one bullet, Vicky.
Under other.
Right here.
Yeah, just look at it, it's the last.
Yeah.
Section.
About the residency?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So they're giving an exception there inside of the job description to the charter.
Well, they're saying residency inside the corporate.
Is desired.
Is desired.
But not, but required.
Required within five miles.
Unless it's otherwise agreed upon. So I don't know.
Does that say that in the charter? Unless otherwise?
Let's see, section, that's section one. Says the residency has to be within five miles of the city limits within ninety days. I think looking at the job description, that's not saying they don't have to live within that five-mile limit, but I think it's adding a little leeway to the ninety days that they have to, so that maybe they can't necessarily move their entire family within ninety days or establish residency, but if they're, if they can't find a house, we might need to clean up that part of the other, so that it just matches the charter more closely.
Well, I just hate to lose somebody that, like, lives in Marshall, or North Chapel Hill, or somewhere out in Petersburg, just because, you know, because it's not within five miles of the city limits.
But to change the charter, you have to go to legislation.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
If you change the charter, the five miles, you could always end it, so.
I guess just real quick, how was the other gentleman allowed to live in Farmington and not, I mean, we need to clean it up, so.
That's what, I pointed that.
Well, I don't.
I think that occurred.
I, I think that occurred because of the candidate and where he lived, and I think maybe the council took that as their ability to say there was an agreement between the city manager and the city council, and that, and I think they waived it for him. I don't remember the details for sure, but I think that's what happened.
But, okay, we'll waive that if we get the appropriate candidate?
I don't think that ever come up in the interview process, it was just...
I mean, I'll look at it and see.
That's who they wanted and that's who they selected.
That's what I'm saying, that's who they wanted and that's who they were gonna put in it.
Well, I just don't have conflict with the charter, I mean...
I understand.
What do we, if we're gonna do it, just do it right and...
Right.
That period of time, it wouldn't have made a difference if it was in agreement with the charter or not.
Well, yeah.
It also may be that this section said something different, whatever that was, because this was also, you know, a lot of this was updated, I think, in twenty...
It didn't change, that part didn't change.
Back, back in the period when I was mayor and we were doing, they held them real firmly to the five miles, you had to move within five miles, and everybody that they interviewed, they told that. That's, uh, he was, he was the first exception, I was gone by then, but that was the first exception I'd ever heard of that rule, so.
Well, I, I don't remember it ever being discussed, it was just...
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, does the council, if, if we got a, a candidate we would really like that was not within the city limits and really didn't want to be, for whatever reason, would the council have the ability to waive that requirement if we chose to? Is, I guess is the question.
I, I would defer to your city attorney, but I believe your charter is pretty clear. It states within five miles, you can't defer from your charter without a charter amendment.
Okay.
Then that answers that.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Now, do we need to put that in the advertised qualifications, because that might stop someone from applying that is not, I mean, if I lived in North Chapel Hill, I wouldn't, I wouldn't move to Lewisburg just for the job, because it's travel.
That's up to you, if you want, I mean, you're right, it could discourage some candidates, but, um, anyone that was truly interested in the position would, would make that move, I believe.
You know what, Vicki, why don't we just leave it out and see what we get?
All right, it may not be an issue at all.
Yeah, and then if it becomes an issue, there always may be a little something, something we can do to make it. I, I just hate to scare people away.
And Hutto's gonna give us answer to that before we have to address it, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, any further questions?
About the job description, that's all from me.
Okay, any other questions? Pardon me?
Do we need to talk about his...
Proposal, yeah.
The contract, or whatever, while he's here?
I haven't read that yet.
Well, he's gonna be here for the...
No, he's not.
He's not, he's gonna leave.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought he was staying in front of me.
I'll, no, I'll be leaving after this special session, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Go ahead.
So, number B, review and discuss the Municipal Code Advisory Service, MTS, proposal agreement to search for a city manager.
Okay, Ms. Marsh?
Okay, what you also have in front of you is a, uh, general assessment center service agreement that we've done for department heads, uh, police chiefs, fire chiefs, you name it, city managers throughout the state. Uh, this is a template, we defer, we prefer not to, um, amend too much, but if there's anything you'd like to tweak, uh, I'd be happy to, um, recommend those changes back to, um, our human resources people.
Yeah, I've got, whoever wants to go first, I got a couple.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I'll, I'll wait. Uh, yeah, on number two, there, it's got Human Resource Director, we don't really have a Human Resource Director, have a, have a Human Resource Representative.
Yeah.
Uh, there, and, uh, if overnight, uh, travel is required, Assessor, MTS would not bear the cost. So, basically, the city would be paying for, not your services, not screen, anything like that, but if there's any out-of-pocket travel, meals, anything related to that.
That's correct, we, uh, we don't charge for the service of the assessment center itself.
And then advertising.
Yes.
What I pay all advertising, now, is it proper, I can talk about advertising to managers?
Sure.
Yeah. What, um, what, what are y'all recommending, where are you gonna place the advertising, how, how you gonna do your search?
Yeah, we, we put, uh, we advertise the position with the Tennessee City Managers Association, the Tennessee Municipal League. We advertise at all the major universities, um, in Tennessee, and, uh, we also recommend that, um, you know, you do something local in, in a local newspaper, website, or regional newspaper, website. Newspapers are becoming somewhat obsolete, so that's why I add website on there, um, but that would be the recommendation. But we get the information out statewide.
And we're gonna put it on our website, right?
Yes, sir.
But there, in all of this, there's no charge to the city?
That's correct, unless you want to advertise, you know, through some other publication that we wouldn't, I don't see the need for that. You're going to get the audience that you want pretty much through the Tennessee City Managers Association and their affiliates.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I stay any type of...
Yeah, they'll get, that's information from Tennessee City Managers goes through ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association.
So, y'all send it to the, the international one also?
Yeah, that, that, that's, the, ICMA picks that up from the state affiliates.
Okay, now, is there also a regional organization besides the international, is there reg, regional City Managers Association like Southeast?
Just, there's, there's a Southeast, um, affiliation of ICMA, but it would be, all of that would be communicated through TCMA.
So, the only cost would be advertising in print media, not, not necessarily, but, some of the, some of the web are, were they charged for posting too?
No, they won't.
Okay, so the only other travel, lodging, meals, then the only thing we'd do is if it's in basically in print media, local newspapers or...
Right, that, those, um, those costs, you were talking about travel for meals and hotel, whatever, I would be part of this process, I'm local, I'm in Columbia, so that wouldn't pertain to me, but it could pertain to some of our HR consultants and anybody that we put on the interview panel.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Would, would there be an opening and closing date on the advertising?
There will be, yes.
Okay, how long, how long will it?
Generally, we do that for forty-five days.
I wish it was a little shorter, but...
Well, that, that is up to you, we could always say minimum, that, we could say, um, it's open until filled, if we got twenty applications right away. So, we could put it as open till filled.
I think we need more than thirty days. Barbara, you have it for the five.
For...
They have to ask for a salary increase.
But, what, are we talking about the deadline to submit their application?
That's correct.
Forty-five days?
That's correct.
I'd rather that be thirty days.
Thirty may not be bad if it's just submit your application.
I like that open to, till filled.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I do too, because we just don't know what kind of a response we're gonna get.
We could say open till filled and first review at thirty days or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that works.
That sounds good.
What number we wanna put for fill?
Pardon?
What number do we wanna put for fill? What number would it would be?
What do you mean what number?
It'd be, when you selected a person when the position was filled, you just, I guess they'd start the process pretty quickly and then...
It's open to fill.
It's open till we hire someone.
Yeah, if it takes us sixty days, it's still there, but he's got, we're gonna review after thirty days to see what, you know, so we could potentially fill in forty days.
And, you know, if we, if we don't get a candidate that we think is proper for the position, we keep on advertising.
Well, I'm comfortable with thirty days to a week.
Yeah, and then, and I'll be able to come and report at a regular meeting at the thirty day mark as to how many applicants and what I believe to be the qualified applicants.
I doubt that, there would be a whole lot more.
There wouldn't be any names released. There wouldn't be any names released at that, that point in time, but I could...
Yeah, because they may have previous jobs, you don't wanna mess that up.
Yeah, correct. We just need to, we need to stay in line with the, uh, open records requests and things along those lines.
Do what now? Uh, so you have a proposal before us?
I do.
And has everybody looked at that proposal, is there any tweaking of that?
I just have a question about the process.
Yes.
All right, so really, I'm in Section A of your proposal.
Okay.
Okay, um, and it appears that, you know, we'll advertise, you'll receive applicants, uh, and then it talks about your, um, role-playing and your, um, nor, norm reference personality test.
Yes.
Will these occur after the first group of interviews, when you only have two or three candidates left, or do you do that for all of them?
That would just be the, for the finalists.
Okay, and then I have a real concern about, um, number six, where it says that you're gonna provide the rate trainer, training for the assessors. You know, you could train me for thirty minutes to an hour, and I would not be qualified to judge a norm re, reference personality test, so, uh, that bothers me just a little bit.
Yeah, you wouldn't be evaluating the personality test, that would be a psychology professor with a PhD.
And would that be at an expense to the city?
Um, I would need to check on that, if you decided to do that.
So, we get a choice here, this is, okay, because I have an issue about the role-playing as well, it's just a personal thing for me. You know, if you, if I'm city manager and you bring me a problem, I'm not gonna be able to look at the problem for five minutes and assess, uh, a reasonable, you know, solving the situation, a solution, you know, I would wanna call other people in, get other facts about the situation. So, the role-playing, I think, puts a potential candidate, uh, in a situation for failure, in my mind, because nobody's gonna do that in five to fifteen minutes.
As a former city manager, I don't disagree with you, but, um, these type of assessment centers are designed by HR people, but again, this is your preference as to what you'd like to see.
Well, that's what I wasn't understanding, because I was reading in this, is, this is the process steps, we're gonna, you know, call out the first couple, and then we're going to do role-playing, and then you're gonna get to see the results, so I saw that as a process, and not as a choice.
Yeah, we can, we can change whatever you want in there.
Okay.
It could be a straight-up interview with a, you know, a personality test, or we could add, um, you know, a writing exercise, whatever you wish.
Okay, I know these things are popular in business, I mean, I've done the role-playing before, I've done the reference personality test before, in my previous employment, but, but the role-playing was more of a training issue and not a, a hiring situation.
Correct.
So, uh, since you have to leave us, when we act in the regular, uh, council meeting, are, you're gonna, we're gonna be asked, the council to approve me to sign the agreement, but you said that we were gonna change something.
Yeah, if you wish to amend anything, take out some of those...
Do we need to do that now?
Well, if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them now, but they will need to be officially removed during your special meeting.
So, does anybody have a problem with the proposal that he's gonna submit, we need to ask?
I'd just say it too.
Other than, other than understanding the cost of reading the personality test.
Well, Tommy had that one about changing HR director to representative.
Right.
I didn't have any issues to bring up about it.
Well, could we take that as, since he's gonna be gone, so should, uh, the motion to approve the contract be subject to changing, uh, those items we just talked about?
Can't we just do a, a motion to amend, if I read that word?
What's acceptable to MTS?
Yeah, that's fine, I already actually changed that word to representative, that's, that was just a, uh, position clarification, so that's not a true amendment.
Okay, so what else was there we're gonna change?
Role-play. No, we weren't necessarily gonna change it, because it's, I was, I, I thought this was a firm process, and I wanted to make sure it was fluid, we can decide to do it or not do it at later date. But, he's got it in his contract, if we decide to do it, we're covered under the proposal.
That's correct, all I need to check on is the, uh, psychological evaluation.
Yeah, and there's a footnote at the bottom that says MTS can arrange for those things to happen.
Right, doesn't necessarily mean, if we choose to.
So, if he's already changed it from director to representative, we could, we could just approve it, agreement as is, right?
Correct.
That's what I'm asking, is everybody comfortable with that, because he has to leave, so...
Yes, I am.
Hey, you got any problem there?
I, I don't, do we need to pick a number under Section C-12 of now, or is that gonna be something that's determined as the contract goes on, of how many people go through the assessment center? Are we looking at...
Um...
Section C?
C-12?
Yeah, the red word.
Yeah, generally, we recommend, um, three to four final can, finalist candidates, um, that just limits the number of candidates, because it, the amount of time it takes per each candidate, about three hours for the process for each individual, so we wanna make sure that we can do it all in one or two days.
So, you're gonna put three to five in there, in the wording?
I would, we would recommend three to, three or four finalist candidates.
So, is, is that...
Three to four works.
I will go with that.
Yeah, so that's, three to four is going in there, and you're changing that, so...
Three to four.
Right, and we could, we could always recommend alternates in case people, what's gonna happen is these applicants are applying for other jobs too, and if they get another position, they would pull out of the process, so we could have, um, you know, backups in there, recommend, um, backups in case...
Yeah, that makes sense.
...other individuals pull out.
So, you're gonna put three to four there, and you change director, Human Resources Representative, so we can just make a motion to approve this, and you already made changes.
With no, no contingencies, just straight up, correct?
No, you can approve it, but then, at a later date, once we get the candidate selected, I can come back here and we can go through the process in more details to decide if we wanna do the psychologist, decide if we wanna do the role-playing, decide if we wanna do a basket exercise, or a, uh, writing exercise, whatever.
Well, we wanted to start the process as soon as possible, so...
Yeah, the, the process can be started right away, I'm just talking about the assessment center itself.
So, if I sign the agreement today, uh, what, what comes next?
We'll advertise, we'll send it out to our affiliates right away, with a deadline of, uh, open till filled, uh, first review at thirty days.
Okay.
You've got to make the changes, though.
Yeah.
Send it to...
Yeah, I would make all the changes first.
But that's not part of the...
So, that would be done, I, I don't wanna say today, it would be done this week.
Yeah, but still nothing to do with what we're gonna approve in the...
No.
No.
Okay, I think we're clear, anybody else have a question? Really appreciate your prompt attention to this, Mr. Morris.
Yeah, we're happy to help you and look forward to the process, and hopefully we get a rock star in here for you.
You say you used to be a city manager, you wanna profit us?
What's that?
You say you used to be a city manager, you wanna profit us?
I, uh, I did my time. But thank you, I, I, yeah, I was a city manager for twenty-three years.
Where at?
Illinois and Wisconsin.
Okay. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
I will send you a list of the benefits, uh, because I know you wanted a list.
Yeah, just send me a list of the ones you want included, along with the salary. Okay.
Any, any last minute questions? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes the motion, seconded by Ronald Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no.
We got 10 minutes recess. We can start.
We are adjourned.
Just as an off note, can I make a suggestion? Is this just a suggestion?
Special call, council meeting. Go ahead, Gina.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Lewisburg that citizens will be allowed to address the council during citizens' input. Citizen addressing the council must abide by the following guidelines. Name and address given for the record. Give subject matter description. Understand there is no voting. Three minutes maximum to speak. Address council, not audience. No personal attacks. No religious comments. No more than three minutes on the same subject. Thank you.
So anyone wishing to speak to the council?
Yes.
Please come up to the podium and give us your name and address and sign in, please.
My name is David Perkman. I live at 732 Bark Street, Lewisburg, Tennessee. My phone number is 931-371-2233. I would just like to address the council about possibly considering someone that you already employ in-house and in hopes that he files an application. I humbly request that you consider Chris Rutch, the codes manager. He does have a degree in municipal, municipal management, and I think he would make a fine candidate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Shannon, since you're, you need to go quickly, did you like to make a motion? Well, let's read the, let's read it first.
Number two, discuss and take on, take action on the city manager's job description for advertising. So this is what we did in the workshop with changes.
Shannon, would you like to make that motion?
Make a motion?
To approve.
To approve.
Is there a second to that motion?
Well, make a motion to approve.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call or roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Barnes?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Item three, review and discuss and take action on municipal technical advisory service, which is MTS, proposal and agreement to search for a city manager. Was we going to hold off on that or?
No.
No.
He thanked the changes, so there's no amendments, right, Huddup?
Do we have a motion for that?
Motion to approve that agreement?
Yep.
Have the mayor sign it?
Okay.
Most approve agreement with MTS and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Is there a, that's, Councilman Barnes, who seconds the motion?
Go ahead, Ronald.
Ronald, did you second?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Councilman Robertson. Is there discussion? Call or roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Barnes?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Yeah, Shannon, I thought that was going to be. Anyway, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilman Robinson makes the motion. Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We stand adjourned.
That wasn't even three minutes. We're going to get some heat up. Called me off guard. I got lost for a minute.